I'd like to call the meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Adjustment to order. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the governor has issued an emergency order number 12 that waived the location requirements of public officials at public meetings. This meeting will be conducted electronically via Zoom. Let me begin with a roll call vote. Martine Badger.
Here.
Charlie Bozzello.
Here.
And Dave Toth here. The reason we're meeting tonight is that we've received a motion for rehearing on ZBA case number 2020-01, which is the quarry slash or the gravel pit slash landfill. I've asked Martine to review for us the procedure pertaining to rehearings.
I will. Let me just get something up. Okay. Just and can everybody see the screen that I'm sharing?
Yes, it's good.
Okay, okay. Just a brief review for our board and for everyone listening and watching. On January 14th, 2021, the Ashland ZBA denied a special exception for a commercial excavation operation on Tax Map Lot 4-2-2 in the rural residential zone. And New Hampshire RSA 677:2 states that within 30 days after the ZBA has made a decision, any person affected directly by that decision has the right to appeal. So on February 12th, 2021, the Ashland ZBA received a motion for rehearing submitted by Charles F. Cleary, counsel for the applicant Brandon Hiltz. And today we are at March 11th. And then now just to review a few points on process. When a motion for rehearing is received, the ZBA must hold a public meeting within 30 days to decide whether to grant the rehearing or deny it. And that comes from RSA 677:3 Roman numeral 2. A couple notes to keep in mind, this is not a public hearing. No formal notice is required to the applicant or abutters. And from New Hampshire OSI's Board of Adjustment in New Hampshire manual, quote from them, "All the board is acting on is the motion in front of them, what has been submitted and should not involve comments by the applicant, petitioner, or abutters. If the board believes there are sufficient grounds to reconsider their original decision, the motion should be granted. If not, the motion should be denied." And again, a few other points. If the board does decide to grant the rehearing, a new public hearing is scheduled with new notice to applicant and abutters. And it is recommended that that new hearing be scheduled within 30 days of the decision to grant the rehearing. If the ZBA denies the motion for rehearing, any aggrieved party may apply by petition to the Superior Court within 30 days after the date upon which the board voted to deny the motion for rehearing. And that comes from RSA 677:4. So just a very, that's just a very brief rundown of what we are doing tonight. We are simply considering whether to grant a motion for rehearing or to deny a motion for rehearing. Okay, I'm going to close that. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Martine.
And David, I do have any of the documents that I can put up on the screen.
You have the, do you have the motion?
Yes, I do. Yes. Okay, I will get that up. Let's see. We've got several things here. Okay. The motion, the motion for rehearing is here. Does anybody need that read? David, what would you prefer?
I think it's a good idea that we read it simply because there are people who are here watching who may not have read it.
Okay, okay. Do you want me to do the reading?
If you would.
Okay. This is a motion for rehearing regarding Brendan Hiltz excavation proposal, Tax Map Lot 4-2-2 in Ashland, New Hampshire. Brendan Hiltz, the applicant respectfully moves the zoning board of adjustment for a rehearing on and reconsideration of its January 14th, 2021 decision denying the applicant's request for a special exception to permit an excavation operation on the above referenced property located in the rural residential zoning district. The applicant asserts that the ZBA's decision was unlawful and/or unreasonable in that it did not take into account that the applicant intended to address all traffic and noise concerns through the planning board process. And as grounds, therefore, the applicant states as follows. One, the applicant proposes a defined materials excavation operation on a portion of an 85 acre parcel of land identified as Tax Map Lot 4-2-2, the property. Number two, the property abuts Interstate 93. Number three, access to the property is over West Street, a public right of way that runs through the commercial zoning district and dead ends at the property within close proximity to Interstate 93. Number four, reasonable uses on lands bordering Interstate 93, such as the property, are going to be limited due to the constant flow of traffic and noise associated with the major highway. A well-planned excavation operation is one of a few uses that would not be adversely affected by the nearby highway. Number five, the Ashland zoning ordinance permits excavation operations in the rural residential zoning district by special exception. Number six, the applicant addressed the seven special exception criteria with information, testimony, and plans, including supplemental materials. However, the ZBA remained concerned with, one, the site being an appropriate location for the use, two, the proposed use being compatible with neighboring land uses, and three, the lack of a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. Number seven, the property, the site for the excavation operation, is 85 acres of land immediately adjacent to Interstate 93 and access through the commercial zoning district. The 85 acres of land allow us for significant buffers between the proposed excavation operation and both the conservation land to the north and the commercial facilities to the south. The site has been used for excavation purposes in the past, and the proposed gravel operation is not inherently incompatible with the area. Number eight, the proposed use can be compatible with neighboring land uses, which are largely commercial in nature. While there is a senior housing facility on West Street, the site layout of such facility in the commercial zoning district allows it to be largely self-contained. The senior housing facility was approved for its present location with knowledge of the existence of Interstate 93 and of the traffic associated with the commercial zoning district. Any use for the property or construction of new uses in the commercial zone will result in some additional traffic on West Street. The use as proposed by the applicant is compatible with the commercial zoning district and can be conducted in a way that is compatible with the expectations of the senior housing facility. Number nine, the proposed use does not by its nature result in a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Operating on a large parcel of isolated land at the end of a commercial street limits any hazards to others. Trucks are no more of a hazard than other types of vehicles when properly operated. As was previously pointed out, there is traffic on West Street because it is intended to be a busy commercial district. If properly operated and regulated, the addition of some additional truck traffic creates neither a nuisance nor a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The applicant intended to ensure compatibility and reasonable traffic operation through discussions with the planning board during site plan review, including a substantially reduced speed limit for the excavation trucks utilizing West Street. 10, the existence of the senior housing facility on West Street should not lead to a conclusion that an excavation operation cannot safely operate on the large parcel of land at the end. Hours of operation, speed and volume of trucks, buffer requirements and signage can address noise and traffic concerns where the underlying operation would otherwise locate well on the 85 acres of land bordering Interstate 93. 11, if the special exception is granted, the Ashland Planning Board can and will address the operation of the excavation project through its site plan review process. Therefore, the applicant requests a rehearing on the denial of its application for special exception for discussion of how the specific concerns can be resolved and for the ZBA to consider whether the proposed site is appropriate for the proposal under safe operating conditions, with the understanding that the planning board can and should address any traffic and noise concerns. Respectfully submitted, Brendan Hiltz by his attorneys, Wadley Star &amp; Peters, PLLC, by Charles F. Cleary, counsel for the applicant, dated February 12th, 2021.
Thank you, Martine. At this point, the ZBA needs to discuss whether or not we should grant a rehearing on this motion. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to deny the rehearing.
Is there a second to that motion? I will, I will second that just to promote discussion on this. Martine, what is your rationale for denying the motion?
I don't believe that these issues rise to a serious enough level to reconsider our decision. That's basically what, what I feel. I don't think, I don't think the reasons are compelling.
Charlie, do you have any comments?
Yeah, my, my comments are very different. I have some serious concerns with the way this process was conducted. Let me just characterize it this way. Number one, I was impressed, I think, by the significance of the applicant's proposal. This is a, an operation that has a potential, not only for considerable benefit to the applicant, but also considerable benefit to the town of Ashland. In effect, they are proposing to harvest a natural resource of the town of Ashland. That's like, you know, finding a gold mine. And some people think that it's better than finding a gold mine when you find rocks because gold mines are very unpredictable. Rocks as an alternative are very dependable. And the harvesting of rocks is something that has been done successfully for eons, as long as history is recorded beyond the pyramids of Egypt. So number one, I want to say that I think the proposal is significant. Given the significance of the proposal, I'm a little perplexed on the lack of due diligence in developing the potential problems and issues and more importantly, the solutions to the potential problems and issues in some objective way, some perhaps scientific way. I mean, it was very difficult for me in the original hearing to even, you know, although I voted to support the application, I had to do it based on general knowledge, subjective information, feelings. And it was also my opinion that those who opposed the application did it the same way. There was a remarkable lack of objective information. And just as an example, we talked about the potential of noise and disturbing the residents of the senior community that's nearby. And I would have expected that somebody had done some research or an experiment to determine just, you know, how much noise was transmitted from that site to where it may have been considered a nuisance. I think I observed in that first meeting that that that's, I mean, it's not even a hill. I think you could make the argument that it's a small mountain that separates the site where they're proposing the quarry to virtually anybody else who would be exposed to it. You know, I don't think you have to be an expert to appreciate that that offers a potential for a significant mitigation. And we didn't see that developed in the process. Nobody said, hey, let's make a dust cloud on one side of this small mountain and see how much dust comes out the other end. I mean, those seem to be the obvious types of analysis that would have been performed, not by the zoning board, but would have been performed by the planning board and would have come to us via the work that they did. Also, I'd like to point out also, one of the the lines caught my attention. This is, I'm referencing the Ashland Zoning Board of Adjustment Notice of Decision on this case. And it indicated that three criteria were not successfully granted. And under the first criteria, it makes a statement that based on the concern, a majority of land that abuts this property is under conservation, there was concern regarding impact to the aquifer and wellhead protection areas and stormwater management. That would need to be addressed. Well, that's, that's a curious wording because by denying this application, we terminated any opportunity to, to address it as in our own decision we expressed. That's, that's concerning. And I think that's a theme for this whole process. And I think the applicant also expresses that theme in their, their submission where, you know, in what Martine just read, there was a couple of things to me that stand out. In the article numbered eight, I think the applicant says that the, the proposal can be conducted in a way that is compatible with the expectations of the senior housing facility. Well, we didn't really get a chance to know how that would be. And I think the applicant points out correctly that that's a deficiency in the way this was developed. Also, in article nine, the applicant intended to ensure compatibility and reason, I'm quoting, and reasonable traffic operation through discussions with the planning board during site plan review, including a substantially reduced speed limit for the excavating trucks utilizing West Street. Again, we really didn't get to hear from the applicant. I think in my mind, there was much in this process that is deficient. And it's my proposal at this point, that not only do we agree to a rehearing, but before the rehearing, that this application gets resubmitted to the planning board. And they do the work that needs to be done here to objectively develop the issues that have been described in a way that we could objectively deal with them.
Charlie, I am going to interrupt here. By law, the zoning board must agree to grant a special exception before this proposal can go to the planning board. That is state law. That is the process. We can't reverse the process. The special exception grant has to come before the proposal goes to the planning board.
Okay. Well, then, Martine, all you're really saying is that we, at the zoning board, which is kind of strange to me, we have the responsibility then to develop these issues in detail, to extract scientific data, conduct experiments, and to generally provide an objective basis for the decision we made. We haven't done that. So according to law, then what you're saying is we're deficient.
No. Our, the responsibility of the zoning board is to judge this application specifically based on the criteria that are stated in our zoning ordinance. First one of which is whether the site is appropriate for the use. Second one of which is whether the proposed use is compatible with neighboring land uses. We do not at this point, we do not send experts out and hire experts at this point to do data analysis and site analysis. That's the responsibility of the applicant to present that information if they feel they want to include that in their application.
Well, we didn't give them a clear opportunity to do that. And, and I think they expressed that in their request for a rehearing. So somewhere the discussion failed, and I think it's incomplete. I, I just believe that there is a lot more work to be done here. We can argue who's going to do it, but who's ever going to do it, we need better information to make an objective decision and not the type of decision based on a lack of information and subjective feelings that I think the first meeting resulted in.
Let me make a few comments too. One is that we did actually ask them for that kind of data during our first meeting. And their response was to come back and say that they were going to follow all of the rules and regulations that have to do with blasting and noise and, you know, protecting the wellhead protection area and so forth. We did ask them, or I did ask them to provide studies about noise, which they decided not to do. I feel it is incumbent upon them, or it was incumbent upon them, to present that kind of information on, on, on the first go-round, which they did not do. So as far as a member of the zoning board, I can only make a decision on the information they give us. And I can, but we did, we did allow them the opportunity to provide us with that objective data, which they did not do, and which this application for rehearing doesn't do either. I would say that what they're asking for here is really, or what they're claiming, what they're claiming is, don't worry about a thing. The planning board can take care of all of these questions by imposing, imposing requirements on, on, on them as, as the plan goes forth, rather than giving us enough data to feel comfortable that we should allow the plan to go forth.
My comment on that, Dave, if I might, is that, you know, I've been, I've been doing this for a while, and I'm really not used to the zoning board having to conduct this type of discussion with an applicant. Now, you know, I don't know, you know, in this process, who should be having this discussion with the applicant, but usually it's the planning board that coordinates that type of information and the correspondence with the applicant and the dialogue and the negotiation. It's, it's a complex process, particularly when you're dealing with something as significant as this, this applicant's proposal. And all I'm saying is it's clear that wherever it was supposed to be, it wasn't done. And even the applicant knows that, I mean, it seems they are telling us that they feel they weren't given an adequate dialogue in which to develop this prior to the time that it needed to come before the zoning board for a vote. And, you know, we have a chance to, we have a chance to fix that. It's harmless to anyone to continue this dialogue because only better information can come out of it. And that better information, you know, can be analyzed objectively. And we can reach whatever decision that objective information points us to. But I, I think it would be deficient for us to dismiss this when we, I think all appreciate that the information was not well-developed and that it wasn't a proper discussion of this applicant's proposal.
Well, I would, I would say that we, we looked at the information we were given. It's not up to us to develop their proposal. It's not even up to us to say whether, whether or not we think this is a good project or a good proposal. What we have to say is, does it really fit within the spirit of our zoning regulations? And in my mind, they simply did not provide, and they do not provide here, the information that allows, allows at least me to say, yes, this is compatible with the existing, with the existing, with all the existing land uses. And, you know, he makes the point in here with that our zoning allows for an industrial use in a rural residential area. I'm not sure that that's true. This is a commercial area, not an industrial area. So I draw, I have to draw certain lines there. Martine can tell you more about the way the process in New Hampshire is, is, is set up and what, what kinds of information the zoning board can expect. But we did, you know, as I say, we did ask for the objective data, and it was not forthcoming. So, you know, I would have to agree with Martine that that I can't, I'm not going to allow a rehearing based on the information that they provided here. Is there any other discussion on?
Alan, have any, Alan have any comments?
I don't. There is, I'll just make a simple statement. I don't see that there's any new information brought forth by the applicant to warrant a rehearing. I believe it's the same information that we dealt with the first time. And after agreeing to continue the hearing at the second hearing, there was additional information, but not to the degree that I would consider necessary to have changed my mind then or now.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
I have nothing, I have nothing more to add.
Okay, um, all those in, in favor of, uh, Mardine's motion to deny the request for a rehearing?
I.
By roll call, Mardine Badger?
Yes, to deny.
Charlie Bazella?
No.
Dave Toth? Yes, to deny. So the motion, uh, for rehearing is, is denied by a two to one vote. We will, we will ensure that the applicant is, uh, is informed of the, um, decision by the board. Our next meeting, I believe, would be on April eighth.
That's correct, April eighth. Yes.
Because the, the April first is on, on the first Thursday, so it's a short one for us.
Yes.
There is any, any further discussion? If not, I will call this meeting, uh, to a close.